A special board meeting executive session to order. And I would like to make an announcement before we start that item number 14 on the Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting at 7:00 PM, we anticipate that this item will be deferred until December the 11th. There's been a death in the family of the applicant and they have asked that we delay this until December the 11th, and that would be our plan. So if we could have a motion to adjourn into executive session.
No move?
Appropriate motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any matters to consider from executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we reject the Clark settlement offer.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Did you vote Alderman to plan?
I did. I voted along with everyone else.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the same way as they did.
Okay.
And did you vote also Alderman to?
Good. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn executive session?
No move.
Appropriate motion. And is there a second from Alderman Martin? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, now move on to the work session of Tuesday, November the 13th. The first order of business would be, I would like to remind anyone that has not received notice that the item 14 on the Board of Mayor and Alderman agenda, it will be deferred until December the 11th, 2012. The applicant has had a death in the family and requested this deferral until December the 11th, 2012. So if you're here-
That's the Simmons Ridge item.
The Simmons Ridge item. So I don't see anybody here. I think that's-
Tried to get the word out.
So now we'll go to item number two, which are citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda. Does anyone want to speak to this body? See no one, so we'll move on to item number three. Presentation from Waze.
She's not present tonight.
So we'll-
We're just getting jilted all over.
We're moving along.
We're moving along pretty good here. Item number four, consideration ordinance 2012-55, an ordinance to annex the Clovercroft Road right-of-way along the Breezeway subdivision frontage consisting of 5.28 acres.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a request by our Streets Department to finish the annexation of along Clovercroft near Bay Hill Circle. This was part of a 2007 plat for Bay Hill Circle that required that annexation to come in so that the street could continue to be widened. The annexation is a simple linear annexation and was approved by the Plan Commission unanimously.
Questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure I quite understand why we're actually annexing that in, because we continuously have to do more work over there or because the work that was already done?
It allows for second access to-
It allows for the second access.
That's the primary reason.
That is not there now.
That is not there now. And that is something that both the Streets Department and emergency vehicles will use to fight fires, to have ambulances have two ways in and out of the Bay Hill Circle area.
In the back?
Yes.
Yeah, I know that. And then we are also responsible to put sidewalks in, is that correct?
Well, there are no sidewalks required either by the Bay Hill Circle plat, which is section four, or by the school plat, which is section three. Neither of those sections of final plats require sidewalks.
Why?
It's a rural road. Clovercroft is considered a rural road and that doesn't require sidewalks. Dan Allen also has some information regarding the topography of the road and whether sidewalks would even be a possibility.
Well, I've got letters and emails coming in from some parents over there that are walking their children to school and children walking on the streets. So they've requested sidewalks. County did not want to put them in. They wanted to wait till we annexed it in, so it's anybody under our responsibility at that point. Schools said they had no responsibility to put it in, and yet we have parents and students on the street.
The residents of Breezeway don't need a sidewalk to access the school. They have other, within the neighborhood, they have the ability to get there. I think those residents might be outside of the city, down the way, further east-
Yeah, they've got-
Who's walking?
Their parents, I'm not sure where they're all coming from. I didn't double check the addresses, but I could do that. But they, they're probably not with, I don't think they said they were within Breezeway. But I just feel that it's an unsafe area and the school needs to address it. And then if we go ahead and annex that in, then we're going to be responsible for the sidewalks as well. And we're probably going to have to address that as a safety issue.
Neither of the plats require it.
Well, I don't care if it's required or not, Catherine, but it's, you know-
I understand.
I understand that. But whether it's required or not, it doesn't matter. It's what is happening over there. So I have a couple of emails, three to be exact, and also one from Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Danner, who've been contacted by parents also walking their children to school and the children walking themselves. So I don't know what we need to do about that.
The county wouldn't have responsibility beyond that. If you want a sidewalk that serves that area to go to where I think these concerns are coming from, that is outside of the city, in the county. They'd need to partner on that if that's something they-
Don't we annex that in?
We're not annexing that area in. This covers Breezeway, which does not need a sidewalk to get to the school.
Okay, all right.
This is for residents outside of Breezeway.
All I know is the commissioners both got, contacted me and said, well, we're not going to go ahead and pursue this because once you annex it in, you're going to be responsible for it. You should, you should put in the sidewalk. And I, I didn't understand the fact that within the development, why they would need that, but outside of it, yes.
This, this area of Clovercroft is fronting Breezeway and it fronts just the Bay Hill Circle area.
On the outside of the area.
On the outside of the area. And there are, there is ways for the Bay Hill residents to get to the school.
I don't think it's the Bay Hill residents.
Yes.
It's still going to be an issue. Okay.
Item number five, consideration resolution 2012-55, a resolution approving plan of service for the annexation of Clovercroft Road right-of-way along the Breezeway subdivision frontage.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, this is our plan of service, which is required for any annexation we do. Primarily what we're looking at here is the normal plan of service that we would see. The fire department will fight fires in that area along that piece of street. Our garbage people will continue to pick up solid waste. All of the normal services that we would provide, any resident will be provided here. And really doesn't have that much to do with this since this is just a small piece of street.
I'm sorry? Go ahead. Alderman Martin.
That, that piece of street, does it connect to the other piece of street that we own or is it just sitting out there by itself? No, it connects to the other streets that we own and it will connect into Bay Hill Circle. So there is a, there's a connection to allow for that second access. So it goes all the way from Franklin to the second access? Yes. I just can't tell from this.
Item number six, consideration resolution 2012-61, a resolution to update the community revitalization plan.
Kelly, talk about that. This is an update of a plan you approved back in 2011 of some expanded areas.
Yes, the Housing Commission recommended expanding the geographic boundaries of the Franklin Community Revitalization Plan. So staff, along with the Housing Commission, studied various data sets and came up with a map that should be included in your packet. The areas add one square mile and about 2,000 existing homes to the target area. And we've held one public meeting where about 15 people were in attendance, and both the Housing Commission and the Planning Commission have recommended approval to the board. And I'll try to answer any questions you have.
And those 15 were from the new area?
Yes.
So the, on the map, on the, on the wall here, the yellow area is the new added area to the community revitalization plan area.
Now, now that the bottom is like the rocker area that-
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
And that area contains almost 20% of the city's population.
Interesting.
Total, the 2.8, 2.8 square miles.
Good. That's a lot of people that we normally reward.
Just for the rest, would you tell us what that will, how we will avail ourselves to that? In what way?
Yeah, the CRP supports future grant opportunities that will enhance and protect that core area of the city. Expanding these neighborhoods really just says that these are important parts of the housing inventory in Franklin and they need to be preserved because it's an important part of the housing stock.
Okay. Consideration number seven, consideration resolution 2012-58, a resolution authorizing negotiations for design services, professional services agreement for the wastewater system improvements as identified in the Integrated Water Resource Plan.
A couple of meetings ago, we talked about the projects that were identified within the Integrated Water Plan on the water side. This is essential to wastewater, both treatment plant and system side. And I'll let David and Mark talk about where we are in terms of the proposals we've taken in from design firms and how they help us work through the next steps of the, of the program.
Well, as you recall, we went out for RFQs, or requests for qualifications, back in the summer. We received 16 submissions of qualifications for the wastewater projects. We had the same selection committee that we did for the water projects and with the evaluation and scoring of the SOQs. We have come down to the firm that we want to recommend that we, you allow us to negotiate with for the contract proposal to do the design of the wastewater treatment plan. Also, a listing of firms that we want, we would ask that you allow us to negotiate with for collection system improvement projects as they become available or as we start to fund some of those projects, just like we did with the water system. The firm that, excuse me, the firm that we have selected as the selection committee for the design of the wastewater plan is CDM Smith. As you recall, they're the firm that led our efforts in our Integrated Water Resource Plan. They have very good credentials, of course, and we would ask that you do that. Do want to point out, as far as this, that we have recognized the fact that as we go forward with the design of the wastewater treatment plan, we need to add to, to that, well, let me back up a little bit. Your resolution for approving the wastewater treatment, our wastewater system projects did not include anything concerning biosolids treatment and/or hauling or handling. And we have realized that, that as we go through this, we need to include some design, just like we did for the water plant for looking at if we were ever going to expand it. We need to do some process design on biosolids. So we do need to include some of that into this proposal and we wanted to bring that forward to you now to let you know that we're, we are looking at trying to get some of that design done. As we do the design of the wastewater plant, we have to have design being done for how we're going to process or treat the biosolids where we can have the integration between the biosolids for the treatment part, along with the treatment of the wastewater or the rest of the wastewater. And what we're looking at as far as the biosolids is we have treatment and we have de-watering and handling. We're not asking for anything right now for the de-water handling, which is, as you'll recall, we were looking at a method of doing those two things that was relatively expensive. So we have, we're keeping that out at this, at this point. And we can do that at a, at a different time. And we could actually do that with a different firm if we so chose. But that's something that we would be looking at coming back later. And we would be looking at that as we're going through the design, the preliminary design probably, as far as the wastewater plant itself, we'd be getting a better handle on what we're doing, processes, what we need to do and look at as far as class of sludge. If you remember, there are several classes, excuse me, it's biosolids. I'm, I'm used to using sludge. But we-
You know what I mean.
But we would be looking at that and we'll try to, try to get the information back where we can start making that decision before we finish the design, actually, of the wastewater treatment plan. But we'll, we'll come back to with that. So wanted to explain that and ask that you approve the resolution 2012-58 that authorizes us to start that negotiation process with CDM Smith for the wastewater treatment plant and, excuse me, with Barge Wagner, Sumner Cannon, Brown and Colwell, CDM Smith, Garver, Hazen, Sawyer and Smith, Sackman Reed for any collection system projects that may come forward or be funded in the, in the future. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
You're saying that we're going to be looking at this as we make the plans for the upgrading expansion of the existing wastewater plant?
We'll be bringing back information to, to try to get the decision made. And you, you guys, of course, will be making that decision, but try to get the decision made of what we're going to do, how we're going to handle it, and even getting the funding for doing that final design and, and get ready for, for construction, if, if at all possible. We're going to be looking at that, but it's not, the handling or the de-watering and handling portion of biosolids is not a part of what we're doing that we're asking for now. It's a separate issue.
But it, but it sounded as if you said a little bit earlier tonight that we would make a decision on that before we upgrade the wastewater.
We would hope to have the information available and be able to present it to, to you as the board to where we can have that decision because as we going through construction, we need to be, if at all possible, we need to go through and get it done. We need to do, we need to do the whole, whole processing of our wastewater, our biosolids, including the handling. And again, and I know y'all, you all realize this, but we're kind of precarious out there as far as hauling the sludge to a landfill and if something happened to the ability to be able to do that, we're kind of, we're kind of out there.
But the fact that follow through on that.
Anyway, that's what we want to do is get started, bring information back to you where we can get the decisions made of how we want to go and what we want to do with it.
But haven't we all said whenever we were talking about this before, that that is such an expensive project to, to do what has been recommended to us on the biosolids? I mean, it's many times the cost of upgrading this, the water treatment, right?
As it is looked at right now, the, the cost is very extensive.
Yes, that's right.
But with what we would be doing, we would be trying to get that refined, a more refined cost down, which we think will be a lot less than what's been presented so far. Once we get to how we can do it, but it also, if you'll recall, when we went, looked at the overall long-range cost of what we're doing now, we could actually save money even with that expensive cost over the life of everything. Not initial capital, but that would, that would work out that we would, we would pay back, pay ourselves back after, I think around 10 years-
10 to 15.
10 to 15 years, so. But that's, that's something we're not really going forward with right now, but we do need to get that initial biosolids process treatment as a part of the design.
Any other questions? Alderman Skinner and then Alderman Berger.
So we're, we're not going to take the design as far as selecting one sort of process for the-
That's going to be, that's going to be a future piece. But I will tell you, the sooner we start to work on that, the better because it, having an understanding of the path we want to take is going to be important and it's going to have some implications down the line in how we design and build what we build out there in terms of expansion. So this does not include that, but you know, I think sooner than later, we're going to want to start having that discussion and bring that forward to you to start looking at those, of those alternatives, refine that cost number and start working through that. We're, we're trading off a very expensive operational cost for a capital cost that could, could be more sustainable long-term and there are multiple options to look at with that, but we want to, you're going to need to do that. It's not included at this, at this point, because this is largely focused on the treatment process, not so much the handling and finishing, if you will, of the, of the biosolid.
I just want to make sure we weren't going to design down to a point where in the future if we decided for process B instead of A, that we've got to back up and redesign so that we play design.
This design process might bring you to some questions where you need to kind of take that fork in the road and some things.
I think it's important to remember too, we're currently at a 12 MGD facility, expanding to 16. Our solids handling won't be able to sustain a 16 MGD-type wastewater facility as well. So as Eric said, this decision will have to happen sooner than later. I think the way we're, we're attempting to go through this process is to make sure that we keep you all engaged, get your feedback and make sure that the, the solids handling process that we move forward with, everyone's on board with. During the integrated plan, we, we presented an option, an option of, of many different options that are out there. And it was based on input from the stakeholders, input from the steering committee. So that's the, that's how we ended up in that, I guess, the solar drying option. But you know, so what we, what we hope to do here in the next, I think it's six months or so, is, is interact with you all, get feedback and then, and then move in a direction, whether it's stay what we're doing now or, or move forward with some other process. So that's, that's where-
But we've got to design the treatment process and the expansion, and that's what this takes care of. This, this other piece is the, the handling in the final form that, that biosolid is, what level waste and where that may be able to be taken in terms of disposal or how it gets disposed of.
Alderman Berger.
Mark, can you remind me, we're, we're currently at 12 MGD for the wastewater.
Correct. It's our permit capacity, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're going to go to 16.
16, yes ma'am.
And what's the drinking water treatment right now?
The-
What do we do?
2.1. A little bit, 2.1.
And we want to expand that to what, what was the-
The proposal is the expansion to four.
To four.
That's still an open issue. We have not resolved that issue.
Yeah, right. I just wanted to be reminded because I thought it was two to four, but it's, hadn't talked about it for a while, so it's funny. So we're going from 12 to 16. Okay, okay, got it. Fine.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next is item eight, discussion regarding Marriott Conference Center operating agreement.
We have had for a number of years, an agreement that has brought the Cool Springs Conference Center together, working with the county. It's been a very successful arrangement and, and something that has served the community well and has managed to be funded. We will pay that off within the next month. By the end of December, we will have-
Paid off the city's obligation for that conference center and have paid that off without a single use of general fund dollars to pay debt service. So that is a huge success story.
Part of that is the management arrangement that we have to operate that conference center that works in conjunction with the operation of the hotel. That is getting ready to expire in 2014. So it's a little ways off, but it's not that far away. And we wanted to bring to you and to your attention that, that is on the horizon, that our approach at this point would be to look at some form of extension of that arrangement because of the unique construct there of the hotel and the conference center being so intermingled with the operations and the efficiencies that you have with those, those systems essentially and that, that those, those facilities working together. And so that, that seems to make sense. It is largely an agreement that works. We would look at some, maybe some adjustments that makes sense now that you just learn over time, but, but largely continue that arrangement would be our interest and work with the county to pursue that and that you just basically instruct us to go down that path generally is what we're looking for. So Russ has been a lot closer to the, the numbers and the exact components of that operation. Anything you want to add to that?
Well, one of the reasons for the early start is we are half owners. And the county will have to go through the same process as well. And they've indicated so far they'd like for us to go ahead and start the process and the negotiation. So you know, it would probably be wise for us to go ahead, get as far along in the negotiations as we can, bring the extension back to you and then push it to the county for their ratification.
Sounds good.
Do we want to, do we want to remain half owners or do we want to remain the whole owner?
Okay.
Well, that would be a decision that you-
That would be, that would be a different discussion. I mean, at this point, it's a joint-owned arrangement. This is in the context of how we do this now. That would be a different discussion with the county.
Then, then as long as we pay out, we would receive half the revenue.
That's where we are now.
That's what we've been doing for the past 15 years.
We might like to receive all of it.
And then we have to pay out any months there.
Yeah, then we have to pay a lot to them.
You have to have an agreement, yeah, to have a buyout. And I, I don't know if that's something that's mutually, of mutual interest or not at this point.
We've been very successful, you know.
What we've been doing has worked well and has not only been a benefit in terms of, we talked about paying the debt and really paying its own way, but it's been a tremendous economic benefit to have that there for business meetings, association meetings. We're a great location for those types of meetings. It's a nice size. So it works well and serves our community well and serves the, our hotel and visitor market well too. So there's a lot of positives and we're looking to continue to build on that.
Alderman Berger.
Is there been any discussion on, or will there be discussion in this negotiation about adding on to it? Because we had talked about that before.
Well, I think much like the ownership change, would there be any, the expansion really would be a different discussion. This particular item is really about just the operation and you need, we need to go ahead and nail that down. Regardless of whether we expand or stay pat, whether there's an ownership change, you need that operating agreement in place. There was, for, for the benefit of those that weren't on the board in 2006 or '07, we did do a feasibility study at the request of the, the management group out there and at the request of this board to see if they would, if it would make economic sense. And the feasibility study was fairly positive. But 2008 came along and that cooled any interest on the part of the hotel and the operating team. And it didn't do a lot for us either. So that's been kind of in a holding pattern since then. That could come up again, but as Eric said, I mean, it is a good size. They stay booked fairly steadily. You know, they, they would like sometimes at peak season, you know, in the months of like April and May and then in October when there's a lot of conferences, to be able to set up one conference while they're breaking down the one that just finished. And to do that, they need another 10, 12, 15,000 square feet. But it would be very expensive. It would involve probably structured parking. So there's be a lot to it. I think that's a question for the future.
Yeah. I just remember that study and it was a positive study, so I don't know, but yeah, I'd like to do that in the future. Thanks.
Number nine, consideration business retention program agreement between the City of Franklin and Williamson County Office of Economic Development.
What we have for you in the packet is an outline of a program that we've worked up with the Office of Economic Development with Williamson County. And it really formalizes some of what we've been doing for the past two years. I kind of feel like Mayor Moore should talk about this a little more than I do. Something he's put a focus on is consistently meeting with existing businesses and spending time with them to understand their operation, understand any issues or needs they have and, and work with them to, to help resolve that and do what we can as a city or just understand those needs and what we can do in the broader region to help those businesses succeed. And one of the things we note in here is somewhere between 60 to 75% of, of job growth comes from your existing businesses. That's just a general rule of thumb. We think it's at least 70% here that that comes from our existing businesses. So one of the most efficient economic development strategies is to work with and take care of the, the folks that are here now and, and look at ways that you can help them continue to succeed and, and do even better as you go. So what we have done over the last couple of years is really had opportunities to visit and just listen to what's going on and what their needs are. and just listen to what's going on and what their needs are, see where there are themes across multiple businesses, see how we as a city and county might work together on those, how we might bring other resources beyond ours to look at issues and try to be a helpful resource there. What we put in the budget that you all approved, and we did talk about this in the budget process, was a distinct funding component of $20,000. This helps fund a specific position in the Office of Economic Development. Jeremy Pyron, who's there now, who has been in that office for some time, but his focus has gone entirely to existing business, and so Jeremy will focus on that, and this helps fund a portion of that position and then the support needed for that position. What we would ultimately do is translate the outline that's in this agreement into a specific interlocal agreement between the city and county that would provide for that funding and for this program. It is somewhat broad at this point because we're just getting going. And that's in part by design because we're just having some of these initial visits. And I think as we go along, we will refine the program and have more specific expectations that may come out of it. But right now, I think the expectation is to have certain regular visits, develop that program and that consistency of doing it, a process of identifying issues and themes that come out of it so that we know what we can, what we need to work on as we go forward. And so that's really our starting point. We will develop this in an agreement and bring it back to you for approval.
I might make just a few comments about it because it has been something we've been emphasizing for some time, and now we have a dedicated person for it. I think the first thing that happens when we go in to visit these companies is they're saying, well, you know, they're prepared to accept us and greet us, and the first question is, why are you all here? And because Vicky's arranged all these people to show up. And we've carefully explained to them, we're there because they are the source of many of the new jobs that come in our community. And we've had a lot of surprises with it. We're finding companies are expanding. We're finding certain common themes. One of them is parking. Many of the companies now are redesigning the way their office is designed so that they can have more people and the square footage. And so that gives us the opportunity to explore some other options with them and integrate them with the Franklin Transit Authority to consider other ways to relieve some of that pressure they have. Certainly, we're talking about job training and highlighting opportunities and also finding out what some of their needs are. We found this common thread in many of the companies that they need IT people. Another theme that we've been working on is how much airline traffic, how much airline use they have and what their airline usage patterns are. Their HR departments will send that information into Jeremiah, and then we're interacting with the Nashville Airport as far as trying to create some additional flights potentially in the future. There are a number of things that may trigger who we visit. There are some companies that move here that, there have actually been companies that have moved here, we didn't know they were coming, and they had a significant number of jobs. So that's obviously a trigger. There are companies that are expanding, and we want to visit those and make sure that whatever their needs from the city are being met. We also are aware of some of the leasing agreements, and as leasing agreements may be coming up, that could be a trigger for us to make a visit and discuss. So I think it's been a very productive program up to this point, and I think the addition of a staff person is only going to make it better as we create those relationships to have the existing companies that are here continue to expand and grow their job market and make it a business-friendly place or continue to make it a business-friendly place for businesses. And we are finding a lot of happy campers right now, so.
I just have one thing to say.
Alderman, Martin, and Alderman, Peterson.
Is he paid by the city or the city and the county?
Yes.
He's a county employee. We would contribute to his salary, but he's officially a county employee.
Yep.
He is now. Yeah.
Alderman, Peterson.
This is obviously something that's important, not only here but other places. I'm really glad that we're kind of moving in, you know, on the forefront of that because I think approximately a week ago, Wall Street Journal had a cover story on one of their sections about small business and job growth in small business. It would really be worth looking at, too.
And we'll be getting some kind of quarterly report, I mean, from this person or for you? Or how do we...
I anticipate we can generate that.
Yeah, there's a reporting requirement in here, and that will develop over time as well.
Alderman, Berger.
I just might mention that last week I took another one of the courses through UT that is offered through, to elected officials as well as people in our community for economic development. So I took the Tennessee Entrepreneurship and Small Business Development course, and we talked a lot about retention, which is something I'm very interested in as far as economic development. And it was a very, very good course. I recommend that people on the board take the economic development courses as they come along. But the retention aspect of it, a lady from Iowa came and gave them most of the seminar, most of the two-day course. And it was, the ones I've had before are very interesting, but we talked mainly about entrepreneurship and retention in our communities and some of the issues of how the business, the incredible business growth from the businesses that are already here and how important it is that we don't neglect them, especially in our economy right today. And so I'm really happy that we're doing this and that they've also, at the EDC for the county, they brought in Amanda.
From Matt Largensong.
And she's also concentrating on that as well. So in fact, she was in the class with me. So I think it's a good thing that these courses are offered in that we can take it to our respective places in the city and pay attention to that along with these kind of efforts.
Item number 10, consideration interlocal agreement with Williamson County for drop-off at Hazard Waste Facility.
Becky, come on up. We've been working on this grant for some time, actually, in terms of a facility grant, $250,000 facility grant through Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation to have a permanent household hazardous waste facility. We've worked on that in partnership with the county. We're refining what that program looks like, and that's a full grant. But to get the facility that we think we need for the community long-term is probably going to be more than that grant, and Becky's worked in partnership with the county on some ideas on funding additional needs for that facility to keep that moving along. I'll let her talk a little more about that.
Well, as Eric said, we are in the process of applying for a grant. It's $250,000, and it's a non-matching grant. So what the interlocal agreement before you tonight says is that the county would be willing to support us financially up to $100,000 as part of the building process, construction process, for a permanent household hazardous waste facility. That would go in addition to our BOPA drop-off now. We would have, instead of one day a year, there would be collection or drop-off collection Monday through Friday, 6:30 to 2:00 p.m., just as our batteries, oil, paint, antifreeze, and electronics are at our Century Court location.
How much water do we need?
We don't know exactly. We think the cost is somewhere around $450,000 or so. That's where the $100,000 came from. I think the county's saying, well, we'll meet you halfway on that remaining funding need. And so that's the working number at this point. We really still are refining.
And that's just from talking with Nashville and Memphis and Knoxville and some of the other facilities across the state. And just so you know, it would be a facility that would serve the county, the county residents. And this is by no means, the decision that you make on this by no means says you won't see the contract for the grant, you won't see every step of the way. This is just one piece of the puzzle.
And this would be at any location? I mean, is there a...
It would be at our Century Court location. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman, Skinner.
Currently, the only way really to get rid of hazardous waste is to keep it until...
There's one drop-off usually in May.
They have one drop-off that the county does. So this would be something that would be available every, you know, during the week. You won't have to keep it in your garage until the drive comes along. Have we estimated what contract cost might be for a contractor to dispose of some hazardous things, and what kind of budget?
Obviously, it depends on volume. What we have seen volume-wise in the past years from the county drop-off events has been comparable to what they get in Memphis, Shelby County. So looking at that, depending on what the volume and then also what specific items you have, usually the state has a contract with a hauling company that will also come in and dispose of or properly dispose of and haul away anything you have that is hazardous. They're the ones that actually work with the county through the state on the events they have now, the one-day events.
So will the City of Franklin assume part of that expense of dealing with the contractor? Or is that a state?
The way they've done it in other cities is that there is additional grant money that you apply for each year to help with the operating costs, but as far as personnel and facility, everyday operations expense, not so much.
But it could be for the contractor disposal.
Yes, the disposal is what they usually assist with to make sure it gets disposed of properly.
So we still need to apply for the grant and get the grant. This doesn't happen without those pieces happening, although that's something Becky has been working with, TDEC on. We have, we feel pretty good about our opportunity to get that grant, but this is another piece that shows a commitment and a partnership as we submit that and pursue the funding.
This has already been recommended by the county, Williamson County Solid Waste Board, and I think it's on the agenda tonight for the county commission.
Does this also include the, I'm sorry, does this also include the mercury balls?
That's actually a separate item. We're in the process of purchasing a contraption or machine that will actually process the mercury ball, just ma'am.
And so...
And that'll happen this year. That'll happen.
That's in your budget this year for the purchase of that equipment? It's $3,000 or $4,000, something like that?
It's not, it'll be located at Century. Would that be open?
It'll be open 6:30 to 2:00, Monday through Friday.
It would really be just part of the BOPA operation. That's what we're doing here, and that's what that does, too. We stand to it.
Okay. I would like to announce one more time to other people that may have come in that item number 14 concerning Simmons Ridge tonight on the Board of Mayor and Alderman Agenda will be deferred until December the 11th, 2012 because of a death in the family of the applicant. So if you're here to speak to that, we are not going to have a public hearing on that tonight. We anticipate furring to December the 11th. So we'll reconvene at 7 o'clock.